have joined us tonight. While we would prefer to have such meetings in person, the pandemic has limited our holding meetings to those via Zoom for the foreseeable future. Nonetheless, during these difficult times, I believe it is important for the commission to continue moving ahead on the business we have before us. And at the same time, we will make every effort to solicit and to invite anyone who wants to offer information or comments on the matters before us to have an opportunity to do so. Tonight's meeting is such an effort, even though the commission is not required to hold such a public meeting before considering the draft ordinance. So tonight's public meeting is on the draft wetlands buffer ordinance. I want to thank our vice chair and wetlands buffer subcommittee chair Kate Carnahan and Commissioner John Nirbus for the work they've done to bring this draft forward. So far, we've received only one public comment on the draft ordinance. Is that it, Janelle?
That is correct.
All right. Nonetheless, the public record will remain open after tonight's meeting until close of business July 31st to give anyone else who wants the opportunity to submit comments. Now I'm going to turn the public meeting over to subcommittee chair Kate Carnahan. And hopefully, we will have some folks join us who want to share some thoughts.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Just as a way of review where we are, Planning Commission submitted a more general buffer ordinance to Mayor and City Council in September of 2018. That draft was remanded with lots of questions. So we worked on the draft and decided the best way was to revise it to start with one area of concern, wetland buffers and proposed subdivisions. This would give us a strong starting point and a springboard for completing more sections of the ordinance later, addressing other more complicated issues such as developed parcels with existing wetlands. We received comments during the second LPC Water Workshop in November of 2019. Chairman McKay assigned the ordinance rewrite to me and LPC member John Nirbus in December of 2019, and we held five workshops in 2020. And we were hoping to be in Phase Three by this point. And because we want to gather as much comment as possible, I tried to submit just a news brief about this to the Cape Gazette and Nick Goff very kindly wrote a story on it in Friday's Gazette. So I feel there's been good publicity about it. And so today, we received comments from Marty Thompson. And Janelle is wrestling with a way to print out those comments so that you can look at them and apply them to the draft and see what she's talking about. Because it, you know, this is to the individual, you know, B1A paragraph two. You know, you really have to have the draft next to you and then the comments to make the most of it. So that came in today at about four o'clock. So I haven't had time to study what the comments are at this moment. But I think she had a, you know, she's, Marty has been participating in a lot of the workshops that we so I think she's quite keyed into what the issues have been and what we've been talking about. So I look forward to having some time to put that all together. So that's where we are at the moment. Do any Planning Commission members have comments on it?
I say go, go, go.
Thank you.
I have one small question.
Yes.
There was a, there was a mention of storm water management outflow. And then the words, the initials SCD. What does SCD mean?
The Sussex Conservation District.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
I have a question on the screen. I have a question. Okay, on section G, I believe it is. The wetland buffer. One of the things that's not permitted is ADA compliant boardwalks. That, that sounds like a can of worms.
I mean, because of the ADA part?
Yes. I'm just wondering if that's going to fly.
Okay.
And why do you have against handicap people using a boardwalk?
Yeah. What do you have against? Come on.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, it's good to check. No, these are good things to check.
Okay.
And this is the time to do it.
Yep.
All right.
Janelle, do we have anybody else who's not on the screen that's joined us?
Not commission members, no.
Any members of the public, though?
Oh, we have 17 members of the public watching.
Okay. How are they going to be recognized to make comments?
So what I would like them to do is if they would, if they want to make their comments in the chat or just say, hey, I would like to talk in the chat box, and then I can promote them, and then they can make their comments, and then we can go in kind of order like that. So then I can kind of maintain who's speaking and who wishes to speak. If you don't want to speak, just write and put some comments in the chat. Just go ahead and do that. I will make sure they are read into the record or is part of the public meeting. So for everybody to consider. But if you want to put your name or your comments into the chat, I would appreciate that.
I apologize. I went to Never Never Land. My internet dropped. In section C, oh no, excuse me, D3, we have, say that we have to put a note on the drawings for any building lots containing wetlands. But then in section G3 will be Roman numeral three. We say that all wetlands have to be in space owned by the HOA.
Can you repeat that for me, please? Because I just had trouble hearing you.
Get closer to the mic.
Yeah, so section D, paragraph three. It says, "Building lots containing wetlands shall be identified by blah, blah, blah." And then in section G, three, the Roman numeral three. It says, "The wetlands and buffers shall be part of open space owned and maintained by the HOA." So it seems like if G is correct, then there are no wetlands in private property. Or if B is correct, then you can't meet G. Or am I reading it wrong? I could be out in left field.
I think we were trying to figure that some, there'd be some land on private property and some not. But maybe we made it unclear.
I think the intent was it's going to end up on a parcel, a privately owned parcel of land, but it needs to be owned by the homeowners association. So it's not, Janelle owns part of the wetlands buffer and the wetlands. It's that it's part of a parcel of land, but it's part of the open space that's maintained by the association.
Well, I think what you're trying to say there then is that it can be owned by a private individual, but it's maintained by the HOA.
No, it's owned and maintained by the HOA. That I, as a person, do not own, the wetlands and the wetlands buffer do not go on a subdivisible parcel of land. They are on only the open space. So there's no impact to, like, example, my property. So I have my property, but there's no wetlands or wetlands buffer on my parcel of land. It's behind my property in the wetlands, in the open space. So that way then, nobody has to worry about my, it being on my property.
But going back to D, it says, "Building lots containing wetlands." I think you just need to look into it. I think there's a conflict between those two paragraphs.
We will definitely take a look at it.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I, I get what your intent is, but...
Oh, okay, that's because D3 is already currently in code. So, and G is actually new section of code that is being proposed. So there are actually probably lots that currently have wetlands on them that are going to require a permit from the Army Corps. But anything new for G, G is all new. So that's where the buffer is going to be impacted. So say, I have an existing lot and it has wetlands on it. I have to go to the Army Corps and get permission. If I'm a developer going to subdivide a brand-new lot, I can't put any wetlands in, on individual lots. They have to all be in the open space. That's why there's a difference between one's current code for the existing properties and one is going to apply to the wetland buffer for new development.
But doesn't, don't, Glenn, aren't we covered by grandfathered? I mean, if it's already a building lot and it's already got wetlands on it, the code isn't retroactive.
Well, no, I mean, they, whatever they built, of course, is grandfathered, even if it sits in the, in the new buffer area. But anything under construction on their lot, if it was in the buffer, what now a new buffer, you get a permit to, to build in that area, even though it's their available lot. Does that make sense? What's grandfathered is what's currently, and so if there's something on an existing lot that somebody owned, already improved that lot, and those improvements are in what now becomes a buffer zone under the new ordinance, that improvement is going to be grandfathered. Any new construction in the buffer area is going to, are permitting. And any new lots that is something that a developer proposes would not be allowed to be in a wetlands buffer area. No buffer can be on a new fee simple lot.
I'm, I'm not sure that I read that out of this, the way this is written right now.
So the way it reads now is D, current code. If you've got wetlands on your property, you got to go get a permit from Army Corps. G is the new section of code that's regarding buffers. So anything new, any new development, any new subdivision that's going to come through, you have to follow G. And G states that if you've got wetlands, they have to be in open space. D refers to existing properties. So you've got, actually, you're talking about two different sections of code, all in the wetlands. One is, today I have wetlands on my property. I got to go into the Army Corps and get that taken care of. G is proposed developments are going to have a wetlands buffer on them, and they have to comply with all of those requirements, one of which is you can't put wetlands or the buffer on an individual lot.
So where, where does it say that G only applies to new developments?
And the purpose statement?
Purpose provides, provides standards for the establishment of a buffer around all wetlands in major subdivisions as the wetland boundaries are expected to change over time to provide standards protecting wetlands in major subdivisions to encourage natural drainage and to encourage best management practices and design standards.
You wanted to say more clearly, sort of existing lots and proposed. Did you want, would that make you feel more comfortable, Tom?
Well, I, yeah, I'm just concerned that a developer is up. You've got conflicting statements. If, I don't know if I'm making too much of this or not. I just want to make sure that the code is clear.
I'll talk to Glenn and we can come up with something because I think it's a really easy fix. More or less saying any current lots with wetlands on them have to get a permit from the Army Corps.
Yeah, I agree, I agree that, that, Tom, I see, I see where it could get confusing. I, I think technically it probably checks all of the boxes, but I do understand how you could read this and say G and D seem to, seem to conflict because one does deal with what's existing, one deals with new, these outstanding new lots. And these others are existing lots. So, so yeah, Janelle, are you, are you taking, I'll take a note too, but but I agree that I think it's probably an easy, an easy clarification.
Yeah, I have no, I have no issue with the actual intent of what you're doing. It's just the, you know.
Right.
Yeah, we can fix that.
Well, no, if, if, if it's not clear, we need to make it clear.
No, I think we can easily fix that.
Right. We don't, I'm not trying to trick anybody or make anything harder than it already is.
The code, the codes already can do that.
Well, wetlands can already do that.
I have a question about four, the wetlands buffer width averaging. It's four under what? Four under G?
G4, yep.
G4, okay. I'm curious. It starts by saying wetland buffering with averaging can be utilized, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And that, and then as you go down that, and I'm sort of reading away about what you can do and what you can't do. It's not until I get to four that it says that wetland buffers with averaging is not available in Zone A. To some extent, I wonder why that's put there as opposed to the beginning of this recitation so that you know that you're only talking about B when you're talking about the averaging. The reason for asking that question is, is, you know, if up until then, I was sort of reading, as I was reading, that this was available in A and B both, suddenly I realized, well, right, what, what is this? This is only available in B. So I was just curious as to why you didn't announce that sort of at the front edge of that section. It's not a deal. It's just a question.
That's easy enough to clarify.
I mean, just, just so the whole section is understood to, to, to relate only to Zone B.
We'll make, we can rearrange that so that it makes more sense from the beginning. I think that's a good idea.
Going back up to paragraph B, the definitions, the new one that was added, paragraph five. I, I think that needs some cleanup as far as punctuation because it's a little bit of a run-on sentence. So the, and also from an editing, is there a difference between upland and landward?
Um, I'm thinking one of the, an engineer gave us that definition to use that. It wasn't Charlie. It was not Charlie, but I think that's where it came from.
I'll never trust an engineer.
Oh, so an upland is outside the wetland. And an upland can be in the buffer. Because I knew that, I knew where that came from. So they're actually providing that reference. So an upland is outside the wetland, but the upland can actually be in the buffer. Does that help and answer that question?
Well, I'm just wondering, do we need, do, do both those actually add anything to that definition? Recognizing this is going to be some of the trouble I and if it does, that's fine. To, to me, it just seemed redundant.
I think it needed to be in there for a number of...
For clarification issues about what could and could not be and because I think we spent a lot of time on that definition.
We did, and I think we were worried about being absolutely clear so that we weren't the things we didn't want. So figured wordy was better than vague.
Yeah, and landward is upland of the wetland land. An upland is a definition and landward is the directional use of it. That helps everybody.
Thank you, Brent.
Then I, I also think we need a comma after the delineation.
Yeah, we can definitely do this. We haven't gotten to all the punctuation and everything.
Well, because it, it, because the, the second part of this is explaining the first part. It's not part of the first part, I think, if you're trying to get to.
Yeah, we can fix that.
And then the only other comment I had was on, I guess it's page four. Let me see what paragraph this is. Under G2, the term selective clearing for maintenance. Is that something that is, would be understood or should that be added to the definition section? I mean, would, are we opening up a hole there that you can drive a truck through or not?
I don't, I would go under a lot of discussion. And I think it's very similar, if I'm not, Kate can, can correct me. It's very similar to the wording that multiple other towns and cities use is the selective clearing, correct?
And, and for maintenance.
Yes.
Clearing.
Yeah, I don't, and I don't think anybody else gave that a definition.
So that's what we were trying to prevent was just, you know, you're going to turn in an application for something, so you just mow it flat. We're trying to avoid that and try and have sensitive work being done rather than just, oh, I cut them all down. We, that's what we're trying to avoid.
So that would have to be something that would have to be put into the HOA rules and regulations, the agreement? Or is it something that the city would actually enforce?
I believe it would be up to the HOA because it's going to be their ownership and their maintenance. But they wouldn't be able to clear cut because that's why it says selective.
Glenn, I guess that would be something that when the HOA agreements submitted to the city council, we'd have to make sure we caught that it was in there.
Well, I think it's important. I mean, we usually do review the documents for the, for the major subdivisions and the minors, actually. But, but, you know, remember, city code always trumps anything that's in the HOA declaration and, or maintenance agreement. So the fact that we have maintenance or selective clearing for maintenance in our, will be, that, that will be codified, you know, means that even if it's in their documents, it's still in law of the city and, you know, unfortunately, you know, it's going to be buried someplace in the, in the code and when they need to do maintenance on their buffer, will they see it? So ideally, yeah, Tom, you're right. Ideally, it makes it into their documents. So when they're reviewing their own documents, it'll, it'll, it'll be there readily for them. But just remember that if it doesn't make it into their documents, it's still a city ordinance. It's still city code.
Right. And what I'm thinking of is there were, Maryland's about five, six years ago went after homeowners along the Chesapeake because they were asking forgiveness after the fact. They were cutting the land and, which was a violation of the Chesapeake Protection Act. And, you know, once it's done, it's done. That's the only reason why I'm a little hypersensitive to this. It's, you know, if it's mowing, it can grow back, but if it's cutting trees and stuff, they're, they're lost.
Again, that's also why there's a buffer maintenance plan. So as part of this, there's a buffer maintenance plan that's going to have to be proposed and make sure they're in compliance with that. So if they ended up clear cutting, they are going to be in violation of their buffer maintenance plan, which is a requirement of this code.
That's right. That's, that's when we should be able to catch it when we review the buffer maintenance plan. Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Otherwise, great.
A question from somebody in the audience listening in.
So Marty Thompson just wanted to make sure that her conference, her comments offer an edit to the issue of wetlands buffering in Zone B. Thank you for that. And then Judy Rose, she wants to know in G2A1, wetland buffer zone, Zone A, 20 foot on the upland side of the wetlands buffer, does this mean A is next to water and B is upland from that? Answer is yes. A is the closest to the wetlands and then B is farther out. So if you have your edge of the wetlands, go 20 feet. That's your Zone A. Odds are probably it won't be wet, but it's going to be next to the water or the wetlands. And then beyond that 20 feet, then you go to the Zone B. So the Zone B is going to be closest to somebody's backyard, if that makes sense.
Question for Janelle or Kate. How does the Frag Mighty spraying fit into all this?
That would be part of the buffer maintenance plan or management plan.
As an adhesive species.
Yes.
That's true. Okay, fair game. Okay.
Yeah, HO would be responsible for that and that would be part of their buffer management plan.
And hopefully with it out of control and it wouldn't be a big deal. You know, like in various parts of the city now, it's, it's requiring quite a lot of effort and expense to get it under control. But hopefully with something like this, every, you know, annual maintenance keeps it. So it's like, yeah.
I have one other question. At the, at the end of the long list of permitted and, and not permitted activities, at the very end, it says additional regulations. And then it looks like there's a bullet or, can't tell whether it's a bullet or an asterisk. No buffers are required for wetlands to be filled with a valid permit. What, what is that about?
So there are wetlands that per the Army Corps and Denrec you can fill. So if you have an eighth of an acre of wetlands and it's non-title, non-jurisdictional, isolated, you can fill that. So where, if you're allowed to fill it with a per, an Army Corps, US Army Corps of Engineers or Denrec permit, we're not going to, this ordinance does not require a buffer from that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have to say, this is one of the most technical and complicated issues we've had for a while. I mean, it's very few pages, but it's dense.
It is, yep.
It's not a light read.
So where does this go from here?
Well, we're going to keep the public record open until close of business on July 31st. And if, what we'll do is the ordinance, the buffer ordinance group will have another meeting and I'll take all the comments that we receive, make adjustments. And I guess it'll be up to the chairman if he wants it one more time or is, and then vote to move it forward to Mayor Council for their consideration.
Great.
So we just got one more question. Sorry, it was in the Q and A. So is there a provision for a vegetative inventory to be taken above buffer and documented during a plan review and approval process?
I guess I would hope whoever comes up with the maintenance plan would have to know what was on the property and...
I think the intent is if you've got trees, you leave the trees. If you're going to plant new trees, they're going to be in accordance with what makes sense out there. If it's going to be open space, making sure it's, it's that open space. I don't think we were, I don't think the intent is to get specific. I'm putting this plant here, this plant here, like a landscape plan. I think it was, if you want to, you can definitely do that, but I, I think that's how it was looking.
Or even, you know, just so that you have a variety of
I have a question.
and say shrubs, you know, things to provide shelter for animals, insects, butterflies. Yes, sir.
Question for Glenn, perhaps? I'm just wondering about real estate taxes being paid on the wetlands and the this is all fall under responsibility of the HOA? Or is the value being greatly reduced now to chicken feed?
I'm sorry, I kind of missed it, but if the question is who pays the real estate tax on the, on the open space where the buffer areas will be located, it's HOA.
Actually, I asked our, our city assessor this question. And I need to go through my notes, but if there is no... And I need to go through my notes, but if there is no tax paid on the open space.
Or it's minimal because it's open space. So I think there might be some tax, but this does not impact, I believe is what she said was it does not impact the taxes.
I need to, to go through my notes and it's a big noisy mess, but I did ask this question of the assessor. And it was, it was not prohibitive in any way.
Okay. Okay, two things. This is Charlie. I think the buffer management plan paragraph does require an inventory. Which might answer that other question from Mr. Ritter. And then I, I don't recall the discussion, but about the boardwalks, was it just boardwalks in general? And that maybe ADA compliant got added in?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Because I believe that came from multiple other places that were using it. So I think it really is just generic that it was boardwalk, but it ended up being ADA compliant boardwalk.
Yeah, I'd probably take that out and just say boardwalks because you don't want to imply that a non-compliant boardwalk is okay, but ADA compliant one is not okay.
Got it.
And somebody just wanted us to know that they don't think it's perfectly clear regarding the zone A and the zone B. So we can take a look and make sure that it's clear if there's some concern about what is in zone A and what is in zone B.
A drawing would be really helpful, but I have no skill in that direction. And I mean, I saw a lot of nice drawings that I think would really spell it out, but I'm not quite sure how to obtain a drawing that we could use.
We can look into that.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay, where are we?
I don't have anything else in the chat or in the Q and A.
All right, Kay, are we ready to move on then? And while the public record remains open for people to submit comments, are we ready to close this public meeting?
I think so. I mean, these were all really good comments. Thank you. Because it's hard when you've been writing, writing and rewriting, it's hard to see what's really on the page. So this has been very helpful to let us know what's unclear and where we can improve it. So thank you. We will get on that.
All right. Thank you, Kay. And in absention of John Nearbus, for your efforts on this. And if any other commissioners have comments, Charlie or Glenn, please get them into Janelle and Kay so we can be ready. It would be my intention to put this on the agenda on our next meeting on August 19th for possible action and recommendation. If other commissioners have concerns about that, please let me know. But at the moment, that would be an agenda item for August 19th.
Great.
Hearing no other, I'm sorry. Mark, did you have something?
No, no, I just said, all right.
All right, hearing none, then this public meeting is hereby adjourned. And we will call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Lewis Planning Commission. By my watch, it's 6:34. For the record, all commissioners are present except for Sumner Crosby, who is, was notified to chair in advance. And according to our bylaws, he would not be able to attend tonight's meeting. And John Nearbus, who will be attending later after some repair work done on him. He may be joining us by phone, if not by video. In addition, for the record, we have still, I believe, Ann Marie Townsend, our city manager, an ex-official member. Of course, Janelle Cornwell, our planning and development officer. Dennis Reardon, our city council member and ex-official member of the LPC. Glenn Mandelus, our city solicitor and counsel to the LPC. Tom West, our consultant. Charlie O'Donnell, the city engineer. And Jackie Doherty, our recording secretary. If I missed anybody who has official responsibility. Hearing none, just a couple of housekeeping matters before we go to the agenda. I want to remind the commissioners to please use their City of Lewis email address, email, not address, email for all official business. Please also be mindful when responding to an email not to create a quorum by copying a number of other commissioners or all commissioners. We have to remember we're trying to protect the record and not cause us to have these meetings by email. So the first order of business, unless there's any other announcements from a commissioner, would be the presentation and consideration of an amendment to the comprehensive plan future land use map. Parcel 335 dash four comma one five dash eight comma zero zero for residential to open space. This is a matter we have taken up and forwarded to Mayor and City Council. They had it on their, they had a public hearing, then they had it on their agenda this Monday, July 13th. And we're simply closing the loop and amending the comprehensive plan map to reflect the designation of this space as open space. Again, something we already adopted and as a recommendation for the Mayor and City Council. And Janelle or Dennis, can you share with us what happened on Monday?
As it relates to the.
The change of zone.
Space, yes. On Monday, council approved the request to change it to open space.
So again, this is more of a housekeeping matter to get the comprehensive plan in concert with the recommendation. And the changes now that have been officially approved by Mayor and City Council.
Correct.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the amendment to the, the comprehensive plan future land use map as designating open space for these parcels? Don't everybody do it at once? Okay, so Melanie Moon, we have a second.
Second.
Can they raise their hand? Commissioner Harris seconded. If not all in favor, say aye.
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 Closed or abstaining? Motion passes unanimously. Onto item C, unfinished business. Presentation and consideration of amendments to the R4 zoning district, to which we have a memo from Janelle on R4. And I'll turn to Janelle to give us an introduction to the updates that she provided.
So at your last meeting, you were discussing the lot size and concerns regarding lot coverage for duplexes in the R4 zoning district. So that was able to obtain multiple declaration plans, site plans for several developments for duplexes. And we were also able to go through and look at a number of others based on aerial photographs, some old deeds and other information to determine lot coverage. And what we were able to find out, and that's in your memo, is that everything complied, even the older duplexes complied with the lot coverage requirement of 65%. And they're definitely going to comply with the 50% because I think only one total lot coverage got over, over 56%. So they're definitely in compliance with both the square footage of the house and the overall lot coverage for duplexes in the R4 zoning district. I would note, there's a couple of different types of duplexes in the city. There are two. The first is two units on one parcel. Or there's two units on each, on their own parcel. So they're fee simple lots. So the, the property line goes down the center of the, the building.
I have a.
Go ahead.
I, the, the, the amount of the lot that's covered. I thank you for doing all that research. It was quite helpful. But it doesn't address the, the possibility that not only a duplex, but I suppose any other property can have the rest of the land that isn't covered by the, the, the house itself or the buildings themselves be totally covered with rock that allows water to go through, but has gotten rid of every bit of vegetation, every bit of ground cover that would be other than totally artificial. And we have several of those lots around and about. And I'm curious whether or not there's anything that addresses what happens with the coverage of the land that's not under the building.
So lot coverage is defined in the code and I just don't have it off the top of my head. And gravel is considered impervious. So that would not count against your overall lot coverage. So somebody, because I'm going to tell you, some of these, especially downtown, have stone driveways. If they had been paved, I think their lot coverage would have been closer and they would have had a little bit, but they are stone.
But so, so, so the, the fact that you've got the ground covered by something which allows water to run through it makes it uncovered.
Correct. Makes it, makes it pervious so water can get through. So if it was asphalt or something of other materials, which I believe are identified in code, I just don't have it in front of me, I apologize. Then if it's pervious and water can go through, it does not count against your lot coverage. If it's impervious asphalt, the footprint of the house, water cannot get through, then it's, it's impervious. So that counts towards your percentage.
So my, the wider question then is to what extent is the code in line with the kinds of things in the comprehensive plan that want to talk about aesthetics, essentially. I mean, that is, you know, we want to, we want to have a town in which there is a variety of flora and fauna and blah, blah, blah. And I've got a lot that's not got a stitch of anything on it that isn't totally inorganic. Maybe that's the way to say it. Now, I don't, I don't know whether.
I'm not aware of a code that would, that would prohibit that. Because then I believe, and Glenn can back me up, I think then you're getting into property rights. Because as long as I'm meeting the code compliance, there's nothing that says I can't have a rock garden.
Right. So we, we have a coverage limitation. You can only cover the lot by a certain amount and then everything else has to be impervious. We don't have, for example, a tree ordinance, like what would be requiring a number of certain trees. Education requirement. We simply have a coverage limitation requirement.
Thank you.
Several years ago, and Tom West, you'll chime in and help here. We had very frequent discussions about pervious, impervious. And Henry Burner was involved in those discussions. Just because it's rock does not mean that it's pervious. Because if you go and you look at the best management practice standards, you have to engineer the sub base to ensure that the water can actually perk into the ground. Because if you put shells down, after you've driven on them, that is basically an impervious surface. And many communities have, when we were looking into this, had allotments that you can only get credit for, you get 50% reduction in your impervious coverage if you engineer the sub base. But otherwise, paved is paved is paved. It doesn't make any difference if it's asphalt or brownstone.
So I just brought up the definition of pervious surface. Any material that permits full or partial absorption of stormwater into previously unimproved land. So if you've got stone that's not compacted and it allows water partially to absorb, then it would be, it would be considered pervious.
Correct. And that's where it gets to the, this, the fact that a gravel driveway by definition is not pervious or impervious, it has to be engineered. You have to be able to have a retention bed underneath. And, you know, we, we had a very large debate about whether underneath a house that's up on stilts, if that ground under the house counted towards pervious or impervious. And the building department's interpretation was anything under the shadow line of the E's was considered impervious.
True.
Now, that's because the water is going to run off and it's not going to get there. From places that I looked at, like down in Florida, it allowed you to take credit for it underneath if you had it engineered so that like your downspouts went and deposited the water under the house so it could perk into the sand. So does anyone else remember this? This conversation was several years ago when we were doing code updates.
I remember it. And I, I think the other thing that's reality is I buy land, when you, when you've bought a parcel, it's got a house on it, it was 60%. And you don't have any, you don't have any idea about that. I would say most residents of the city have no idea what percentage their coverage is. They don't think about that. They don't know. And so I think that's, that becomes the issue is that people make small changes for better or worse in light of pervious, impervious. And I think there's no way to keep record of it, to be honest, other than major building changes that would truly quickly change from 40% to say 70%. That would be caught at city hall, but small changes happening over time, I think are uncatchable.
I think it's, it's similar to other zoning violations that occur over time. And you sort of have to depend upon someone reporting it. And then a zoning officer going out and, and checking it out. And if it's too much impervious, then the homeowner is notified. But I, I just don't think it's something that can be tracked.
Well, it usually would be tracked if a building permit's issued.
Well, no, I'm, I'm saying, you know, five years later, after the house is built, it's been approved, everything is fine. And then the new homeowner decides to pave the backyard over. How are you going to limit that? How are you going to know? They don't need a permit for, for, you know, putting down blackstone.
And I don't think most homeowners have any idea what their percentages are or target is. Or, I mean, many people in this city certainly know pervious and impervious, but many do not. And I, I think it's just the reality of where we live. And, and frankly, even at our worst, I would say Lewis is far better than most places.
Tom, Penette, are you suggesting a change?
Well, I, I was really commenting on the calculations of pervious, impervious. And, you know, taking exception that a gravel driveway is not necessarily pervious coverage. So to the calculations, I'm not sure what that does to what Janelle presented.
Well, again, based on the definition, the gravel allows partial absorption of stormwater. So it would be considered pervious. So I did not include that in the calculations of the lot coverages. Now I'm going to tell you, I mean, we're at 48, 26, 44, 52, 38, 47, 41, 43. I don't think that we're going to get to the 65% if I included 100 or 200 square feet of gravel into that calculation. The only one that would probably be close is the one on Chestnut that is at 6, 56%. Everything else is well below the 65. And I think I actually even did some of the calculations, including some of the, the, the driveways. And they were still below the 65%.
Well, a double, a double parking lot would be closer to 400 square feet. It's nine by eight, right?
Perfect.
So it'd be a little, be a little over 300 square feet. But again, when I did the math, nothing was coming up anywhere near that.
And had you talked with Robin or Hannah? And I, had you talked with Robin or Henry, their, the way they're interpreting the pervision?
I did not, because that was not part of what was requested. It was, do the current duplexes comply with the 65% lot coverage? Which they do on multiple different sizes of lots, because I know the commission was looking at whether or not 6,000 square feet was large enough to hold a duplex.
Right, and, and, you know, I understand, this, this was something that happened long before you got here. And just that we spent a lot of time discussing with the building department, and, you know, Henry was the building inspector at the time, and, you know, he was the one who enlightened us on how the building department is interpreting it. And we just need to make sure that our reading is the same as their reading.
Oh, no, I've had this discussion about other things with Henry and Robin to discuss if there's any questions, so we're on the same page.
My, my recollection is that, in terms of lot coverage, that a stone driveway was not considered impervious. Robin's listening in, he can confirm that. I think that if we want to revisit that, it should be done for all, all zones, and, and we have talked about that, especially in the R3 zone. So it's probably something that has been discussed several years ago and needs to, and I don't think it's been resolved yet, from my understanding. I think that, that we were going to look at it, meaning the city was going to look at it. So it's probably still the discussion about whether a shell driveway or stone driveway should be counted as lot coverage. I think that it currently, right now, and Robin can correct me if I'm wrong, that if it's stone or shell, it's not considered impervious under, under the way it's being administered. I understand the concerns that are being expressed, but I do think we have to revisit that citywide, not just for the R4 zone, and talk about it in that respect.
So again, when I did my calculations, I did them twice, one with the driveways, one without. None of them with the driveways got near 65%. So again, does 6,000 square feet make sense for a duplex? 7,000, 4,000, what number makes sense if, if you so choose to allow a duplex in the R4 zone? Because it's based on the calculations, they will comply with the, um, the lot coverage requirement.
Tom West, we actually had deferred any action because the studies were being done by the Association of Coastal Towns. To see what they came up with, so we put it on the back burner at that point.
Right.
Because we were looking at reducing permissible lot coverage to address some of our, our flooding issues.
So, and Robin has verified that Tom is correct, it is considered impervious. So again, the numbers that I did, they're not going to change that much, they're still going to comply with the 65%. So does a 6,000 square foot lot make sense for a duplex?
I think it does.
Okay.
I think we should move forward on this.
All right, so the second part of this was a couple of conditions. I know you guys were discussing maybe making that a conditional use. I forgot to add one, because the one that would need to be added is it not subject to the annual review for her conditional use? To me, that just seems a bit much, if we have to review if a duplex should be permitted on an annual basis. That's up to you. So a couple of the conditions, one, keep that one in mind about that it wouldn't be subject to the annual review. That there, the exterior of the building should be designed and constructed as one building. I think if you look at a lot of the older duplexes, they really look like it's one house, except for it has two, two doors. So that, to me, would fit into the scale, the aesthetic of, of Lewis. The second one is there should be a separation distance of 600 square feet, or 600 feet between duplexes along the same side of the street. So you don't have duplex, 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 but you can have duplex 600 feet on the same side duplex. And I, I, I didn't see an issue if you have a duplex on one side of the street, and then on the other side that you have another duplex. To me, it was the flow of that, the one side of the street, but that's up for discussion. And that duplexes should be in keeping with the proportion, rhythm, balance, and scale of the houses within the 600-foot radius. So that one would be a radius, because you want that, that area to look at. You know, is it a two-story house, is it a one-story house? You know, does it have a front porch? What does the roofline look like? So those are some potential conditions for consideration for duplexes, for new duplexes within the R4 zoning district, if you're looking to make that a conditional use.
I think those conditions are good, and I think the one about not subject to annual review is really good, because if you're going for a mortgage, you're not going to be able to get one if next year you're, you're canceled. So I think that's an important one to put in there as a practical help to someone attempting to do this.
Joe, did I see you wanting to make a comment earlier?
I'm sorry?
I was saying, Joe, did you try to make a comment earlier?
No, there was just some internet, uh, stop and share, that's all.
All right. Tom West, were you trying to add something? Well, given what Mark brought up about possibly covering the whole site, whether it's pervious or impervious, I'm wondering if the commission would in having some area of vegetation, 10% or so, that, that should be open and not covered with stone or ground cover of any kind, and, and be vegetated.
I'm thinking based on what Robin said, that stone's going to be considered impervious, that, that addresses Mark's concern, because you can't cover the entire site.
Well, I think he was thinking about that, it's, it's not covered, but it's still not, there's no if I understood what he was talking about with, going back to the comprehensive plan with fauna and, and other things. Just throwing it out there, you know, while we're on this topic. Now, I'm a little confused, you know, I thought what Tom and Robin were saying was that stone is ordinarily considered pervious, not impervious.
Okay.
Correct, it's pervious.
Pervious, okay, so I was doing it right. Sorry, too many times, impervious, pervious, get them mixed up today.
Yep, all right. Make sure we're clear. All right, what is, what is the commission's sense to Tom's suggestion that we include a condition? Them amount of vegetation remaining on a property unwilling to, uh-
I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
Yeah, I, I thought it was actually a good idea. I was thinking of something similar to that, but I just didn't really know the way to put it out there, because that was one concern of mine. Vegetation, and I do think that, you know, 600 feet separation between the duplexes, that's about a tenth or an eleventh of a mile, right?
Yeah.
That's good space, but I almost think it should be a radius, because, you know, I, I do like duplexes as an option. There are some really bad examples, you know, where it looks like two completely separate houses patched together. And I apologize for being late, I was tied up. But I wanted to get this out there, and definitely keeping it looking like one house and the separation, I don't want to get inundated or somebody trying to bend the rules and coming up with the big swath and do, you know, so.
Glenn, do you see any problem with the vegetation calculation?
I don't, I mean, I guess it'd be a natural area type thing, so it would be grass or some sort of ornamental planting, but, but, um, the only thing I start to consider when we talk about these sorts of requirements in one zone versus another zone, is that, is the, is the state requirement against over, um, the, the state's uniformity requirement, being that you can't require some one or not.
And I'm just going to- I don't have a problem with it, my concern is going to be an enforcement issue. Because if it's in a backyard, you know, going in and checking everybody's backyard if they, like, so, I don't have a problem with, you guys wanted to do that, I just see it being an enforcement issue from the city's end, and making sure everybody's in compliance.
Well, I, I, I think Glenn's point well taken. I like the idea of vegetation, but I don't think it should be specific to townhouses in R4. Going to do that, it seems like it should be something that's across the board, or not, because or a specific zoning district.
Yeah, I tend to agree with that, simply because i- i- unless you can articulate why townhomes and duplexes require a vegetative area more so than a single-family home.
Exactly.
Issues, yeah.
Then I take back my original thought and want to apply it at a different place. Having to do with looking again at the comprehensive plan and the way it relates to values. In which case, you begin to talk about try, try, you can't, to, to try to enforce values is less useful, it seems to me, than to try to encourage such values. So I would love sometime for us to have a conversation about are there ways to encourage people to do things that the code doesn't require, but our hopes for the city do? For example, if we want to have a, a green city, if we, if we want to be want to be engaged with trying to encourage greater use of vegetation on the lands that we've got. Are there ways to encourage that by reducing taxes, or by changing fees, or by, you know, the, the kind of-
So I can tell you, some of the subcommittees are looking into that.
Good, okay.
Because they end up tying back into other things that some of the subcommittees are, so park that one aside, because I know that's being looked at little bits and pieces by other subcommittees.
Thank you. Tom, your boss had some difference on the conditions. John, did you want to make a motion on the, on the radius versus linear? Or are you satisfied with the two conditions related to the proximity of a, of a duplex to one another?
Am I basically the only dissenter on the linear?
If you make a motion, we'll find out.
I'm motion, I'm not sure how to form a motion too properly, but I motion that we use radius instead of linear while dealing with duplexes.
Is there a second to that? Hearing none.
If I can make an amendment, friendly amendment to it.
Go ahead.
Rather than radius, because then you start to get crossover blocks. So you get the, the house behind. Do it on both sides of the street. The separation.
600 feet on both sides.
So I'm just going to note that there are places in the city where there are duplexes literally across the street from each other. They're probably already non-conforming, but do you want to make them more non-conforming?
Well, we already have places in the city, we have duplexes right next to each other.
Correct.
So, you know, we, we've got lots of non-conforming. You know, I, I think to, to John's point, the cityscape is what you're looking at, and that's both sides of the road. I mean, you talk about hard districts, it's not just one side of the street, it's both. So, um, I, I would, I would 600 feet on both sides of the street rather than a radius.
John, your boss, do you accept his friendly amendment?
I accept his friendly amendment, as per-
Consider that, Tom, you're seconding the motion as amended?
No, I won't. Yes.
I wish we were in person so we could smack you around there. All right, is there any further discussion on this, Dennis, did you want to?
Yeah, I, I I don't quite understand all of that, and I'm concerned about unintended consequences. You have some people, some locations already violating that, and when they want to do something to their property, are they going to be excluded from it? And I, I think we ought to really give this a lot more thought. I'm, I'm really concerned about unintended consequences.
I, I, I agree, I think we're being really too fussy about it. I think if, if we're concerned about duplexes within 600 feet of each other, it's a question then of, of the aesthetics and how it looks, and how it conforms to the balance and, and proportion and scale of the street. I don't think it's important at all as to whether there are duplexes within 600 feet of each other. But I would really not vote for the both sides of the street, I think one side is more than sufficient.
Any other comments?
I'm not sure how that addresses, Dennis. That's the same, quote-unquote, unintended consequences dilemma that we have.
So, do you just want to look at doing, leaving out the separation distances and the proportion, the, the ones with the six, well, no, just the separation distance? And then adopt the three other potential conditions, and then think about the next one?
I have a concern about the other conditions.
Go.
Okay, um, when we say that the exterior should appear as one unit, that may contradict then the ability to be compatible in proportion and scale, because if, if we make the two units look like one building, it may be out of scale with the rest of the street. It may be better for them to look like two separate units.
Just, just as a matter of order, there's a, there's a motion concerning the distance condition. You should probably withdraw the motion if you're going to move on to other conditions and consider them.
Want to withdraw the motion, gentlemen?
I, I'd suggest we call for a vote.
Well, I think that I'm afraid of that split look, and too many of the put-together, looking like row houses, or, you know, it's, I don't think it fits in with the city and our goals. If it's got to look like one full house, it can be done. I've seen designs and examples out there, and if they have to keep it a little bit smaller, then they really want a duplex, it has to be a little bit smaller, meet the-
And I'm going to call the question and ask that you show by raising your hand how you vote.
Even out there.
All right, so we have a motion on the table to include 600 feet on both sides of the street. All in favor of that motion, please signify by raising your hand. We have two votes in favor, Mr. Nearboss and Mr. Panetta. All opposed? Mr. Harris? Mr. Hoxner? Ms. Carnahan? Ms. Moser? So the motion is defeated. Now, Melanie, you wanted to raise some other issues about the other conditions?
Yes, I was, I was concerned that there's a contradiction between having two units look as though it's one building. My concern is that as one building, it may become out of scale with what, what else is on the street. And that it may be easier to stay in scale if they look like two separate units.
I was thinking on King's Highway, the, the home next to the King's Arms, that's a duplex. And I think you would never know, plus it's a historic building and a duplex. And the other thing I'll say for, for scale and rhythm, my street's about 500 feet long, and we have a duplex about two-thirds of the way down, and with no off-street parking. And, you know, we have one of the biggest houses in town, former grist mill. And my house is one of the smallest, it was the office for the grist mill. So we've got lots of variety in a very small space, and it works. So just for the whole 600-feet thing. I, I think we should challenge people to do a good job with what the buildings look like. And so we certainly, you certainly can make a really good-looking building that's not just a great big barracks, and yet accommodate a family or, or whoever needs this living style, because we need different living styles. And clearly, it's been happening for a long time. I mean, Janelle's report was very impressive with the numbers. I would not have guessed that from looking from the outside what the math actually was. I mean, I, Janelle's report was very impressive with the numbers, I would not have guessed that from looking from the outside what the math actually was.
So let me ask a question of, uh, Janelle or Glenn. When we talk about shall be designed and constructed, um, to in keeping its proportion, rhythm, balance, and scale of the houses within a six-hundred-foot radius, other than in the historic district, is that an exclusive decision of the building official? Or who makes that decision?
So this would be a condition of approval for the, for the conditional use, so it would um, eventually be mayor and city council making that determination, because they will have the final say over the conditional use.
That's right.
So it goes from the building official outside the historic district, which H. Park has jurisdiction over, from the, um, building official to the mayor and city council to make the determination.
So I think if it's in the historic district, they're still gonna have to go through H. Park.
No, I said, I was saying, by the historic district, it's simply building official to mayor and city council. Inside the historic district, H. Park has the first crack at the apple.
Correct, if the, yes.
So often we blame mayor and city council for anything that's not in keeping with the scope and what else is new. All right, do we have any other comments, um, on the scale and rhythm, looking like one building or otherwise? Melanie, did you want to make a motion?
Actually, I have another comment.
Go for it.
One of the things that I would like to object to would be a two-car garage on one of these units, because it's, it eats up so much of the frontage of the property, it doesn't allow you to have a nice little front garden area. And, you know, I don't care if the front garden is three feet wide, if there's something green there and flowering, it's great. It contributes to the, the sense of the community. But when I see a unit that has a two-car garage, and we all know that people wind up having storage in their garage instead of putting their cars in the garage, so they then wind up parking two cars on the street. And, you know, I think that's not a great streetscape. So I would like to see a limitation to perhaps a one, one-car garage, you know, or any other permutation of off-street parking.
Glenn, is that legal?
Yeah, I think, I think it would be, um, if, if everybody in the district who wanted to do duplex was prohibited from doing a, a double garage, I think, I think that would be allowable.
There's one, there's one other option here, which is basically to get a driveway alongside the house, then put your two-car garage in backyard. Historic, uh, buildings we review at H. Park, they do have this. This, you see the house, you see a driveway, and there'll be a two-car garage in the backyard, out of sight.
So it sounds like the concern is the attached two-car garage.
On the face of the house, yeah.
Yeah, front-loading two.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I think that goes with the proportion, rhythm, balance, his.
Good point, yes, I agree.
Yeah, I think that's all part of, of that. Um, but if you want to put that, I would just make sure, um, it would be the attached two-car garage. Cause that, that way somebody could do the two-car garage accessory structure in the back of the property.
Coming to have the space.
Right. I'm gonna say it's probably difficult with a six thousand square foot.
Right. You, you. That would, you know, seriously impair your previous number.
Yes.
Well, and also, H. Park had written guidelines several years ago about garages in the historic district. And there's some strict guidelines that H. Park has, so we might be in conflict with them. I, you know, I. You know, there are, there are lots of examples of duplexes that fit in. But then we have six duplexes on Schley Avenue, built right next to each other, which looks like a townhouse community. So that's why I think we have to be really careful about, you know, not controlling or attempting to control in some way the aesthetics of it.
So Melanie, are you making a motion regarding, uh, the ta- attached garages?
Uh, yes, I'll make a motion that, um, in the R4 districts, uh, and in a duplex condition, that there be a limitation to, uh, one-car garage.
John, with Neerbas, is that a second?
Yeah, I, I feel the same way, I second that one.
Can I ask for a clarification? Would that be a one-car attached garage?
Yes, one-car attached garage, yes.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion on the motion that's pending and been seconded?
I presume that's per unit?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's still gonna give you theoretically in a duplex, Melanie, if, if it's per unit, you're gonna have two garages in front, underneath or in front of the house that are attached.
Well, you, yes, you would have one garage. Now, it may be a deep garage so that two cars could fit, or it could be a one-car garage and the, the second car sits on the pavement.
But the question I'm raising is, you said per unit, if a duplex is two units, that's giving you two garages by what I heard you just say.
Yeah, there's, there's a one-car garage on, for one unit and a one-car garage for the second unit.
Okay, let's, can somebody restate the motion then, so we get it clear for the record?
So I wrote it as in the R4 duplex, duplexes within the R4 are limited to one attached garage per unit.
Perfect.
Sounds good to me.
Discussion? Do they still require two off-screen parking places?
Correct.
Yes. Would that be in addition to the one-car garage?
So that, the one-car garage would occupy, well, one or two cars depending on the length of it.
Okay, just wanted, just want to be clear on that.
Further discussion, or should I call the question? All in favor, uh, signify by raising your hand.
One, one second, I, I'm gonna ask a question. So is that the entire motion, so everything else has been struck? We're not having any limitations on separation or?
Those are still pending. They have not been moved yet.
Okay, so we're voting on individual.
Just Melanie's amendment. All right, all in favor, signify by raising your hand, please. So I have Carnahan, Neerbas, Mosher, and Hockner. And that's, all right, all opposed? Raise your hand. Harris, Panetta, and McKay. So with that motion carries by simple majority. Now we have the, the amended remaining three rec, three recommendations.
Actually, it would be four, if you want to. Yes, thank you.
So is there any further discussion on those? Or do I have a motion to move as amended the four recommendations, the four conditions? Don't everybody jump at once.
Let me just. Let me just make sure I'm clear about, about the, the same side of the street or both sides of the street, where did we end up with that?
Same side of the street only.
Got it.
Would you like me to read the, the conditions, so everybody's clear on that?
Good idea, Janelle.
Okay, so one would be the duplexes in the R4, as part of the conditional use, would be exempt from the annual conditional use review. That duplexes within the R4 district are limited to one attached garage per unit. The exterior of the building shall be designed and constructed to look as one building. There should be a separation distance of six hundred feet between duplexes along the same side of the street. And the duplexes should be in keeping with the proportion, rhythm, balance, and scale of the houses within a six-hundred-foot radius.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to, uh, approve those four conditions?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Care, uh, Carnahan, seconded by Harris. Any further discussions? Is everybody clear what we're talking about now, conditional use condition? I'm gonna call the question then, again, please show by raising your hand. All in favor, say, raise your hand. Harris. Carnahan, Hockner. Mosher. All opposed? Neerbas, Panetta. And McKay, all right, so it carries by simple majority. What else do we need to take up tonight on the amendments?
So you're making the, that recommendation that the duplexes with those conditions would be a conditional use, and that the art, the minimum lot size for duplex would be six thousand square feet, and then that's gonna go to.
Later, I don't think we've done yet, that's what I was asking, what's left?
Yeah, those are, that's what's left.
So I cut you off, please repeat that.
So it would be determining whether or not you want to make the, um, and I think you could do it in one motion, that the duplexes have a minimum six thousand square feet per lot size. Um, and then it would require a conditional use with the conditions that were amended.
Is the commission ready to move on this in final fashion, or do we need more time? We're getting a motion, just asking, have we satisfied our analysis and discussion of the, of the elements of this? I'm getting blank stares from.
Well, I move that we vote on the, on the, uh, area requirement for the R4 duplex.
She's ma, she's suggesting we vote, and Glenn, did you disagree? We've, we've added conditions to conditional use and six thousand square feet as one package.
Yeah, what, I, I agree, what you basically said at this point is that there are four conditions that if you allow this in R4, those will be the conditions, now you're saying we're gonna allow it in R4 thousand-square-foot lots with the conditions that we just approved, so you want to put it all together into one final package.
Right.
And just for clarification, there are five conditions.
Right, because we've added the garage.
Correct, and the exemption.
So, let, let me understand, this is a confusing vote, so I'm okay with the six thousand square feet, but since I voted against the two amendments, it seems like you're putting in the position that, oh, if I vote for the six thousand, I'm voting against the other ones.
Well, you, if, if you want to break it up, you can say, I mean, I, I would hesitate if I was a, a voting member to, to vote for allowing duplexes in R4 at six thousand square feet, if I didn't know what conditions were gonna be applied, so, um, uh, it's hard to do without making it a full package, because you don't know what conditions are gonna take.
I understand, that's why breaking it up this way seems, all right.
We're not breaking it up, we're putting it together.
Well, we took separate votes on subcomponents of it.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that was just to, so we could get it all out.
Yeah, I, again, this is just a recommendation to council for their consideration of the, um, all the, of the amendments to the R4 district.
So, so I would do it as a full package, as Janelle suggested, and if it does not pass, then you can go back to reconsider conditions.
But I, I still want to raise my question, is the commission ready to move forward on this, or do we need more time for some reason?
I'm ready to move forward.
I'm ready to move forward.
Yes, let's move forward.
And who's gonna make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Fine, second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Go, seconded. Any further discussion, Tom, any, any other issues you want to have discussed before we vote?
None.
All in favor of the combined motion with the, with the, uh, five conditions and the six thousand square foot, in R4, being recommended to Mayor and City Council, signify by raising your hand? So we have Hockner, McKay, Carnahan, uh, Mosher, Harris, opposed. Neerbas and Panetta. So the motion carries, recommendation will be then, uh, forwarded to Mayor and City Council for their consideration.
So I just want to on the record, though, that I'm not opposed to the six thousand square foot, and I'm not opposed to duplexes. It's the other design standard, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for that six-hundred-foot radius, I think we've got, I think it's pretty good to go, but that's what I was holding out for.
That's fine, Mayor and City Council will have the benefit of Dennis's or somebody's input on where we, how we discuss this. So they take it up in August or whenever they take it up, um, they'll know there's some minority opinions on this. All right, can we move ahead then to items B2, presentation, consideration of regulations for cellular towers and 5G systems? We had an attachment to, um, some external documentation that Tom West provided. Tom, I assume you're still the lead on this?
Sure, I could start us off. So we're looking at an amendment, um, to our zoning ordinance, and then also a few associated documents. The one thing that I sent out was a, a flowchart, because it's a little bit of a confusing process with these wireless facilities. Uh, we've looked at this in past meetings, we're basically trying to establish a permitting and review process for all wireless facilities, but it's triggered by the, uh, growing of 5G technology, so that was, that was a driving force for it. Since we last met, um, a couple of the providers have been given copies of the amendments and invited to provide comment. I talked to Janelle last week, we hadn't received any yet, is that changed, Melanie?
We still have not received any comments.
Okay. Um, so, o- one thing that, you know, looking at the process, the planning commissions, like, we're looking at a recommendation from the planning commission, since this is a zoning amendment, it would go to city council, it would need a public hearing. So there is still time, uh, for a process to put in feedback from the providers, if there's anything of significance, whether or not it comes back to the planning commission, can't say at this point. Uh, but we have worked with BPW throughout the process, we've met with them on several occasions, because with the 5G especially, that the thought is that they'll be co-locating these antenna and facilities on utility poles or streetlights in the city. So there'd be a lot of in, involvement of BPW in it, in this process. The, on the project website, we've worked on a zoning amendment, and so it needs to be permitted through zoning. And there's, uh, a number of provisions that are in the zoning amendment. Another document with it is design standards, that is not part of the zoning, it's a separate document, but the zoning ordinance refers to it. Things like how high could it be, or how far back, how high off the ground, a number of those things. The other document that's on the project website is a joint application form. So it's an application form, much like a building permit form, but it would, it's depending on what type of facility they're looking at, whether or not it would go to BPW first, or would go to the building officials first. Um, and that's what, the reason I sent out a flowchart, because it does get a bit confusing, if someone's submitting it for a 5G antenna that's co-locating on a utility pole, it would be, uh, what we refer to as an administrative review by BPW staff. And Janelle's gonna share that flowchart now, so if anybody hasn't seen it, they have the advantage of looking at it. So the, what this flowchart shows in the first column are the types of facilities that are being envisioned or regulated through this process. There's basically three types, the, on the poles, which is, we refer to it as small cell facilities. The second one down, it's showing a building with antenna array on top of it, it could be a water tower uh, or something else, but it's, it's a, it's not a, um, committed structure, it's not a, like a tower just for cellular. And then the last one is the big, uh, towers over a hundred feet tall or something like that, so th- there are the three types of facilities that are looked at being regulated. The second column shows when something is to be permitted. So what it's saying is, do you need to get a building permit or a wireless permit through the city? And if it's yes, it moves on, but there are some things that the ordinance say it's not regulating, like small, uh, personal wireless stations, things like that, ham radio operators, those types of things. They're not regulated through, through this ordinance. But most of the other things would be, so they move on to the third column, which is the administrative reviews by BPW. And there's three, um, kind of categories. They're all small cell facilities, so a small cell that's on, uh, in a state right-of-way or on a state structure is an administrative review by BPW. So it goes into, into their office. Now they have their own document and set of standards. It's called their pole attachment license agreement. So that their doc, when they're, when it comes in here and it, and they're reviewing it. They're reviewing it against that, which sets up a lot of standards for the maintenance and design and, and co-location on their poles. The city's not as involved in that. But there still would be a building permit issued for all of these, um, applications that come through. So the per, the application would go to BPW and to the building officials eventually. So then outside of there is, there are some wireless administrative reviews just by the building officials cuz there could be some 5G facilities that aren't in the state or city right-of-way or aren't on, uh, one of their systems. And the other group in this is that if it's a building or, um, structurally mounted facility that's in basically the non-residential zones, they're listed out there. So they would go for administrative review. The fourth, fifth column over is, um, the conditional use review. So these would go into the city, they would be under a site plan application. So it would be different than just a wireless, it wouldn't be an administrative review, there'd be public meetings with it, things like that. Uh, this would be for installation of a wireless structure, one of structure or building in a residential zone, basically. Uh, they're listed out there or a big tower. So any big towers, new towers that would be brought in would be, go through conditional use review. Uh, which is what, much like we did recently in the last couple of years, there was one that came in, um, down near the ferry terminal. So the flow chart showing you the, the types of, um, facilities that are being permitted and where they're going for review. So it's giving you an overview and then all of them end up with a building permit at the end. Again, we have a zoning ordinance, it's in the, it's, uh, if there's any questions on that, we'll be glad to talk about it. The design standards manual that the city put together and the application form. Um, and I think that, uh, that's the level of detail I'll go in for now. I'm interested in any questions that you have about the process or the types of facilities, um, that, for this type of review.
Chris, do we have any comments or questions?
Um. I thought the process looks very clean, very understandable. I appreciate that. I have some questions on the design criteria. What is clear height? What do you mean by clear height?
Janelle, you're muted, so.
Thanks. Clear height is from the, the, the ground to the bottom of the item. So think of it as somebody has, um, a sign that's projecting out from the side of a building. So you don't hit your head walking into it, you have a clear height, which says between the ground and the bottom of that object, you, there's a certain distance.
Like the cabinet on a pole.
Yes.
And then, uh, again, in the design criteria, um, that the, the, uh, box, whatever it is, is equals less than the diameter of the tower. Didn't make sense to me.
Okay, I'm gonna have to look at that one.
And then, um, uh, again, in the design criteria, it said the signage is not to exceed 25F. Does that mean square feet?
Yeah, there's, there's a letter missing, yep.
Okay. Isn't that kind of large?
Actually, it should be. I'm pretty sure that five should be an S, so it should be two square feet.
Ah, okay.
That, I will fix that. I was like, I did not have that signage that big. The signage was, so it should be two square feet, not 25F.
Right, right, okay.
Any other questions?
The maximum height should not exceed 10% of the existing pole?
Yes, so you have an existing pole. Sometimes the equipment needs to go on top of the pole. So the height of that pole can get taller, but not say, um, I'm just gonna throw it out there, 100 feet or 10 feet, 10%, they can only increase that height by one foot, 10%. So they're not, they can't like double or triple the height of the pole.
I thought it meant the height of the box or whatever it is that's gonna go on the pole. Now I'm thinking, these is two feet.
Yeah, no, it's the overall height of the, so if you've got a streetlight, you know, that's 10 feet tall, you can only add one foot if I can do math at this point of the day. Um, right, so it can only increase a, a limited amount.
I, I think Melanie had the same, uh, it was confusing. I had to read it several times because maximum height is really definite. And then the 10% is what you're allowed on top of that. And unfortunately, like in the historic section, the height says the fourth bullet and the maximum height is down at the bottom of the list. And in other places, it's the top of the list. I think that can be clarified by combining them, that the height shall not be more than 10% above the maximum height of any adjacent pole. Or something like that, cuz it's not clear those two bullets are together.
Okay, we can take a look at that.
I, cuz I, I, I wrap myself around the axle on that also.
And then item D, uh, says not to exceed the height of the building. And I thought, well, how can you put a wireless facility up on top of a building and not exceed the height of the building? How do you do that? I would think it's gotta stick up beyond the height of the building.
So I'm just trying to find it, sorry. There's.
Page three.
Okay, I'm on page two.
Co-location on a building.
Co-location on the building.
And the second bullet.
Yep, I got it. I think we, we were thinking like of a pitched roof, that you're not going above the ridge line. Um, cuz on a flat roof, you usually have a little bit of a lip and then you can have it behind that. We can make that too, so it's, um, at least behind, so it's not visible. Because what we don't want is a 20-foot tall pole on top of a roof.
Right.
Um, we want it kind of like, I, I can look into that, um.
I, I think a lot of these wireless, uh, appliances have to have clear space. So I think they would have to be above the building. I, I'm not an expert on that, but.
So I think what we can do is make sure it's back far enough so you don't see it from the road. So it's kinda hidden, um, that would go with the concealment that we're already, already, um, putting in the standards. Um, and also limit the height, so it can't be more than, again, if it's a pitched roof for a house or something like that, we don't want it above the ridge line. And if it's a flat roof, we probably don't want it more than a foot or two above the flat roof and, and needs to be far enough back so it's not visible.
And then my final comment was that, um, there's a lot of discussion of it's, it's, if it's a new pole, it's gotta be so many feet from this to that. I wanted to make sure that they're not gonna remove any street trees to put up a pole.
We can add that.
That added.
With Melanie, I was trying to find the, the part about the diameter of the pole. It can't, the, you know where that is? Page two, I guess.
I don't have it up in front of me. I just.
I've got it.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, page two.
Yeah, it's the antenna, it's the antenna shall be equal to or less than the diameter of the tower or the structure. So what we don't want is the antenna to be, if, if the, the pole is four inches in diameter, we don't want um, the antenna to be five or six inches. We want it to be in line with, so it looks like it's seamless. So we really don't want it to be beyond the diameter of the structure that it's going onto, so we need to make sure of that.
It'll be interesting to see what, how they, the carriers respond to this.
It is open for comment.
Yeah, yeah.
I have some editorial stuff which I'll just send in to you, Tom and, uh, Janelle. A couple of, um, the higher points is, uh, there is a third class of structures. BPW doesn't own all of the poles in the city. There's a set of poles that are owned by Verizon on Savannah and Washington Avenue. Uh, I think that's, and there's a few other around. And so I'm sure, we need to figure out how that, they're gonna get captured into the process. Because BPW doesn't have jurisdiction over them, but the city still wants to enforce the same requirements.
So the one thing, Tom, and I'll look at that when you send it in, um, under, under at least conditional use, we have something that any wireless facility is not defined under the previous three columns. Uh, to capture things that we're not capturing prior to that. But if it's intended to be an administrative review, we may wanna look at that and put it into column C. If there are a few poles that we just don't deem it necessary to go through the conditional use process. It's, I think it depends on, these are small utility poles, they're not the like 50-feet-tall poles that you're talking about?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, and there's definitely would be covered by the design standards. Cuz the design standards don't look at who owns the pole, it just looks at the type of pole and the location of the pole.
Yeah.
Process says that poles go to BPW.
Right.
Now, and it's just a matter of making sure that we pull that out in here.
Good point.
On page one of the design standards. I was a little confused. The first bullet says all antenna equipment and structure shall comply with ADA. What ADA in there?
So actually, I took that from a number of other agencies because, um, what you, again, goes back to our clear height, goes back to access of the panel, goes around ability to get around the cabinets and all of that. So what we wanna make sure is that there isn't something that gets put up that is gonna cause a problem.
Okay, cuz I mean, the antennas aren't gonna be ADA compliant, you can't get up the poles with a wheelchair.
Yeah, that really is gonna go towards the equipment and the structures.
Yeah, there's sometimes the cabinets are on the ground even, and I think that's where, what we were looking at with that.
Yeah, to make sure that they leave the sidewalk space so you can get through and all of that information, all of those items.
You wanna clarify that with, that's, that refers to clearances or access around or, um. The, and that talks about, uh, so it's on page one, two, three. New tower. The first bullet. I think that, that bullet needs to be cleaned up. It's a run-on sentence and new tower shall be 10 foot from light poles, traffic signals. I think it's really semi-colon. Keep the same spacing as existing towers in the area. Period. It says complement the spacing. I'm not sure, and it shows up in several times in here. I'm not sure what we're really trying to tell them to do that the new poles can be placed.
Okay, sorry, I'm just taking notes.
Yeah.
Um, we can tell them where they can be placed cuz we don't want them on top of each other. Um, um, cuz the intent is hopefully co-locate is, I think would be the preference. And then if you're gonna build a new, like the examples that are on page three, you're gonna build something. It needs to look like one of the other lights poles in that development, um.
Right, but just keep the same spacing as the existing tower structures in the area.
Yes, so if, if, you know, what we don't want is again, one, right on top of each other. You want, you know, a nice spacing. I can work on that.
Right, well, and the, the, the more general one here is that, uh, towers are really, I think are intended to be for wireless, not small cell, correct? Those are not defined in the definition section. You know, we.
I'm just trying to read that section to make sure I'm, I'm following.
Cuz we throw the word tower around in here, but it's never clear. We talk about, we define lattice towers in definitions. And we talk about light poles, but we don't talk about what a tower is.
The tower is gonna be the big lattice pole, is going to be the telecommunications tower. And I thought all of the references to, I, I will make sure that's cleaned up.
Yeah, cuz we, we say we, we don't allow lattice structure, which is perfect, they have to be model poles. So if we wanna say towers are on a poles, that's.
We'll take care of that.
Yeah, there's a couple of spots where there's bullets that are redundant, I'll point them out. As a suggestion for organization and the design standards, because we repeat a lot of the items over in each section. Um, maybe we could collect all the common elements up in the first section and then add the specific ones that are applicable to new historic just as subsections underneath it, so we're not repeating the same words in different areas. Just from a cleanliness perspective, I think it's, it's easier to.
Yeah, we can look into that, just like if you're in the historic district and you're, you're gonna put up a new structure, you have to comply with the new structure in addition to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. Flood plane prohibited. Um, we have, it says new tower except existing, uh, shall be built in the flood plain. And I'm wondering if we really want that. I mean, there's a critical infrastructure, Janelle, as we've talked about many times, but you can mitigate by making sure that all of your equipment is above the 500-year flood plain. Um, and there's so much town that's in flood plain. I'm not sure that what, why we wanna ban small cell po- poles or towers in a flood plain.
That's up for your guys' discussion. If we just throw items out there, if you have a concern with it, we can change it.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, it's something you'd seen someplace else or.
It is, I saw that in multiple other sections, um, other ordinances.
I think if it's not, if it's pulled out, we should at least talk about it, that it has to be above because you don't wanna lose it during a storm.
Right, that it has to comply with the flood plain if we're gonna allow them.
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah. You point to the section that talks about critical infrastructure, which specifically calls out telecommunications. We, in the historic section, I stopped numbering the pages here, I'm sorry. Page where the lattice tower is. It's the administrative group, you shall go to H Park if it's inside the district. H Park is going to be developing regulations that they're going to use.
Is this in design standards or zoning, Tom?
I think that's in zoning.
Right, okay. So. This, it's going in as a site plan review. So the way it's set up right now, as a site plan review, would go to H Park. So that's, that's the thought, if it's in a historic district there, so they're going to review it for. Both the site plan review, or if it's in the historic district, whether or not it complies with 167 requirements.
And I guess, Mo, is it still more of a heads up to H Park that they don't have anything, I think, that discusses this currently? So they probably need to add something to their guideline so that they know how to evaluate them.
Well, we're, I guess the thought is they'll use the design standards that we just looked at. Which I think when we created them, we were looking at their standards too.
Correct, and these standards will go to them for their review. Because we've been in front of them before about the entire concept, so we're going to give them the heads up, I believe was the intent, Tom. To let them have a look at the design standards.
Okay, I'll send the rest of my comments in, we don't have to go through them, I just wanted to.
Okay.
What's the sequence then of consideration of these three documents? Is it to go to H Park first, are we supposed to do something with it first, what's the intended sequence? Well, we were waiting to get. I think we were hoping to get planning commission to review it and coalesce all the, I mean, this, it was quite a bit of work to pull the process together. I think it's largely together, the process right now, that's why we didn't send it to the providers right away, but I think it's. To have the planning commission look at it and make a recommendation and, but we, I think we should also take it to H Park right now, or as soon as we can. And say this, you know, and maybe get them to look at it too as part of the review moving forward, what's your thoughts, Janelle?
That makes sense to me, I think right now it's open for comment, so like we, you, commission just did for the Wellens. Buffer is allowed for public comment to come in. And then you can make a recommendation to the mayor and city council for their consideration. And in the meantime, I think we can definitely try to get to H Park as sooner. And then incorporate any of those comments back in and present it back to you guys, along with any comments that we receive.
What's the comment period?
That is up to you guys.
So that it's not yet in the public?
Open to the public, we just, nobody has set a timeframe for end, ending of comments for consideration by the commission.
But here's a thought, they're putting towers up on Route 1, and there certainly is infrastructure going in at the inlet bridge. So it's coming.
So we need a comment period before it comes back to us. We don't have any idea how long H Park's going to take to deal with it, though.
Unless we tell them, could you please fast track this? So that we could get it on our agenda for.
August, September?
Well, it seems to me August is pretty tight because their meetings are really close to us, unfortunately.
Right.
But we had a comment period through the end of August and asked H Park if they could try and. Come up with their preliminary analysis by the, by the end of their August meeting. We could then take it up in September, but it means it doesn't get to Mayor and City Council till October. Is that sufficient timing?
I think that right now it's the fastest we're going to be able to move this through.
Unless somebody wants to do special meetings, and I don't really know, I mean, if you drive on Route 1, you see the structures that are in the article that Tom sent us.
Glenn, is there any advice you can give us on pending ordinance? How would it?
I mean, so you've got a draft that's introduced at this point. It's not been introduced, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, has this been introduced at mayor and council and referred to the planning commissioner? Have they not had a chance, I don't think they've looked at it yet, right?
No.
Now. I mean, typically it needs to be the body who's going to approve it, introducing it, so perhaps we should have. Mayor and city council put something on their next agenda. To recognize that the draft ordinance is in place, or the draft ordinance is working its way through the process. That I think would trigger the pending ordinance doctrine. And once that's, once that is triggered, then no new wireless communication facilities could be installed in the city that are inconsistent with the draft ordinance. So I know Anne Marie's listening and we should perhaps get that on the agenda for the next city council meeting.
I think that's a great compromise, because then it's out there, but everybody still gets to have time to look at it, because this is complicated for sure.
And mayor and council will, since it's a zoning amendment, need to set a public hearing for it, so that's definitely what they do at their next meeting.
Right.
We should not set a.
Anne Marie's on that.
Should we not set a public timeframe? Comments to us, or leave that until after Mayor and City Council?
I think you can set your timeframe if you want to set a timeframe, I just think to get the pending ordinance doctrine.
Right, I got that.
Yeah, I think we can run concurrently.
So I'm going to suggest the end of August, does that seem reasonable to everybody? We have an open for public comment till the end of August?
Yes.
Sounds good to me.
Then in the meantime, Tom Panetta and other commissioners will forward any questions or issues. To Janelle and Tom to take a look at and see as we work on the document to see we can iron out any inconsistencies or questions that need to be addressed. But we'll get a formal charge back from Mayor and City Council at their next meeting. All right. Is there anything else, Tom or Janelle, you want to present tonight on this?
Nope, I think we're good.
All right, we did have a question come in from councilperson Osler after our last consideration of C1. The amendments are for, Glenn, could you address that?
Let me see if I can find it here.
So the question is, could H Park turn down a duplex if it complied with the rules based on H Park's consideration? I don't think the duplex is under H Park's regulations, that would be the conditional use. They could look at the architecture and turn it down for the architecture, but not the uses of duplex.
Included, when we amended R4, did we include R4H?
No. You just said R4. I think the intent was the R4 and R4H.
Right.
Right.
Because we discussed the historic district as part of the discussion, so I believe then it would include both.
Right.
Right, did anybody who voted in favor not understand that it's R4 and R4H? Okay, I think it's fine.
Okay. Can we move on then to the subcommittee reports? Sea level rise, Tom Panetta, Chair.
Make a brief here, the. Be nice, Drew. We, with Janelle's help, we've gotten through the first, the three parts. And we're working on the second part, which is redevelopment. And we have a meeting.
Next week.
Yeah, lost track of time here. And to work on how to implement. For new developments, which basically is going to lay the groundwork for how. Major subdevelopments will go. We still have some major issues to get through. One of the concerns I have is that. Flood plane ordinance committee and sea level rise. We do, we need to make sure that we're focusing on the specific issues, that we're looking at it from a holistic perspective. Of what we're trying to accomplish, which is protect the health and safety of the citizens of Lewis. From water. Whether it's sea level rise, whether it's storm surge, whether it's rainfall events. And I apologize, Melanie, I missed yesterday's flood plain. Meaning. I'm a little concerned that we've dissected the parts too smallly, small. And that we're not going to accomplish. The issue of controlling. Water in the city and the impact on the built environment, the people. So I think at some point, and it also fits in somewhat with the buffer committee. We need to come together and look at it from a holistic perspective. Melanie, I don't know if you have any comments about, because I think one of my concerns is that on the flood plain. It's, it's become narrowly focused on whether to allow fill or not to allow fill. And that's not really to the major issue of preserving and protecting. Surge volume and stormwater retention.
Well, we're dealing one issue at a time, and the, the real focus right now is on fill. And I agree, there are a lot of other issues relative to the flood plain ordinance. But at this time, we really want to focus on fill.
I don't know if everyone's had a chance to see the latest NOAA report. But it really heightens the issue of the impact of sea level rise on. The coastal areas. And it puts out some pretty chilling forecast for the upcoming years.
Let me remind everyone, and councilperson Riordan will remember this, since he seconded the motion. That in December, the Mayor and City Council passed a motion sending to us. The obligation requirement to come up with a fill ordinance, which is why flood planes started there. But all of the subcommittees have had a broad mandate and recognizing that they do interact and interrelate. And perhaps at some point we'll need to reconstitute them under a different rubric. But right now. I'm expecting that sea level rise is taking a broad look. We won't be able to deal with everything at one time, either through sea level or flood plain. But that in fact, Melanie's correct, we have a list of things that. Flood plane would like to look at next, but we're going to deal with fill in a few minutes. And then we'll go from there, but in the meantime, I suggest the two chairs get together. And talk about how best to look at your list, Melanie, and Tom, your list. And see how we might coordinate consideration of those, either in joint meetings or in some reconstitution. I'll leave that up to the two chairs to decipher that and come back to us next month with an idea of how best we can do this. There's so many important aspects of water issues, no matter how we categorize them under what subcommittee or whatever. But we just want to keep moving ahead, as I said in my beginning statement, I think it's important for us to keep moving ahead. Tom, anything else?
No, no, I fully agree, we have to take it one bite at a time, but. We can't lose the sight of the big picture, so.
Exactly, and we need to jointly set priorities, so. Melanie, let's move to flood plain and talk about what your schedule is.
Okay. Janelle, could you put up the statement with the suggestions that I made?
Give me just a minute.
Okay.
Accidentally closed it, so.
Okay, just to, to report that we did have a meeting this week. That was attended with Brent and Robin were there also. And we, we looked at the statement as amended, and there were no real. Suggestions for changes, and so we would like to go with the Moser version, as it's called here. That specifies that fill within the special flood hazard area shall result in no net loss of natural flood plain storage. Or increase in water surface elevations during the base flood. So. So that's the, what I'm proffering to the commission now. We would like to get a sense of the commission on this statement and the intent here. And would like to leave the, or would like to make this public and ask for public comments. Either through our next meeting or into the end of August.
Oh, you're looking at two things, Melanie, as I hear. One is you want the commission to consent to make this public so that we can then receive public comments. And following that would consider some action by the commission. Do I also hear you saying you would recommend we have a public meeting as we did tonight? At our next meeting as the first item on the agenda?
Yes, yes, I think that would be.
By September, we would be in a position to have received comments, had a public meeting, and take the matter up, unless we need to expedite it. So the choice of the commission is one, do we agree that they can go forward and publish their proposed. Amendment dealing with flood plain fill and expect comments. To schedule a public meeting next month on the 19th. And go from there.
Well, I commend Melanie. I apologize for not being there yesterday, but you've addressed my concerns of where it was going two meetings ago. So I'm all for the Moser version.
Well, let me ask the commissioners, is there a sense of the commission that we need to allow an extended comment period? Or could we close the comment period with the public meeting on the 19th of. August and thereafter take up the proposed draft? And make a recommendation potentially to Mayor and City Council? Melanie, what's your sense?
I'd like to move on this, so I think we should take it up at the next meeting, yes.
Are there, are there other opinions? What I think Melanie is saying is that we would publish this, expect comments through the night before the next meeting. Have the public meeting on the 19th at 6 o'clock. And then following our, following the public meeting, our regular meeting, would have this for possible action or recommendation to Mayor and City Council.
Yes.
Is there, is there objection to that? Schedule?
No.
No, I think it makes sense.
Hearing note, that will be our schedule. So we will publish this as a draft. We will then entertain comments, written comments till the night before. We'll schedule and notify them, there'll be a public meeting at 6 o'clock, the 19th of August. And thereafter, we'll take up this fill draft ordinance for possible action or recommendation to Mayor and City Council. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Melanie, good work, thank you. Hey, is there anything further on wetlands you wanted to talk about?
No, I think we're in good shape.
All right, last item then on the agenda is item E1. Meeting minutes from June 17th. I think Jackie's made us all look good again. So any comments, corrections, or additions?
Oh, I moved that we accept the meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom Panetta, seconds, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries unanimously. Uh, is there anything else that we should take up at this time? If not, I think we should take up a motion to adjourn.
I mentioned we adjourn.
Glenn, Nirbas moves, will you adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Harris, Mr. Harris, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, tremendous unanimous, thank you very much, everybody, for all your time and effort tonight, it was really good work. And we're making progress, and thank you all very much for your contributions before and after tonight's meeting. Janelle and Tom West, thank you both as well.
Okay, have a good night, everybody.
Good night, good night.
Good night, night.
Safe.